of Commissioners. My name is Tracy Philbeck. I serve as Chairman of the Board as well as Commissioner for the Dallas Township. I'd like to welcome our viewers and thank Time Warner Cable and AT&amp;T for making this possible for our citizens. For our television audience, I'd like to present to you your Gaston County Commissioners, beginning on my right.
Alan Frayley, Chair of Township.
Good evening, Chad Brown, Riverdale Township.
Good evening, Ricky Price, Southwood Township.
Good evening, Jason Williams, Gastonia Township.
Good evening, Joe Carpenter, Praters Mountain Township.
Tom Keger, Gastonia Township.
Thank you, gentlemen. Our first item is zoning public hearings. Well, excuse me, we'll do the invocation. Our invocation is going to be led or delivered by Commissioner Williams and our pledge delivered by Commissioner Price.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and the beautiful day you've given us. Lord, we thank you for the privilege to live in this county, Lord, and the privilege of living here in America, Lord. We have the freedoms that we enjoy. Lord, I pray that you would guide our decision-making process tonight as we try to do what's best interest of the citizens of this county. Lord, I pray that everything would be done to your honor and glory tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands united nations under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Our first item is zoning public hearings. At this time, due to not being able to have a quorum with the planning board, I'd entertain a motion to move these public hearings to the February 10 meeting.
That's A and B.
That is A and B. Motion made by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess one question is what kind of impact is this going to have on anybody who is waiting on these decisions to be rendered?
Chuck, could you answer that?
I don't know if those applicants are in the audience tonight, but I don't have an answer for that.
I probably know the answer, but can the Board of Commissioners suspend that and become the planning board?
No. Then you didn't know the answer to that.
I was kind of certain I did.
Mr. Chairman, we're concerned about the situation. It's one, it's an unusual situation that's really beyond anyone's control. Monitoring closely and trying to make sure that it can come off at the next meeting. Otherwise, we'll regroup and see if there is any alternative course action.
Thank you, Earl. Any other questions?
Let me suggest that if it was something that's going to be real urgent for some of these folks, that we call a special meeting for that specific thing to deal with.
Okay, I'm fine with that. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. I do have a quick procedure we had discussion. We did one question procedure. Do I still need to read the public hearing notes? Our next item is City of Lowell ETJ. I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
Well, that's the appointment of...
Planning zoning for Lowell.
Correct.
Yeah.
They recommended Mr. Bill F. Stigall.
Okay. If there's no citizen comment, I'll make a motion to adopt.
Hold one second. I still need to go through this process, correct? Okay, that's what I was trying to find out. Okay. The county commission will take citizen comment concerning applications submitted at or before the public hearing for one appointment to the Lowell Planning and Zoning Board and to the Lowell Zoning Board of Adjustments representing the extraterritorial jurisdictions. The Lowell City Council has recommended Mr. Bill F. Stigall. Are there additional applicants to be received at this time? Okay, that's what I was asking. Do we need to go into public hearing on these two? Okay. At this time, I entertain a motion to go into public hearings. Motion made by Commissioner Frayley, seconded by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Are there any additional applicants to be received at this time? Any citizens wishing to make comment? Any comments or questions from the Board? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion in a second to appoint Mr. Stigall to the Lowell ETJ.
Well, I'll make that...
Motion made by Commissioner Carpenter, seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Our next item, the commission will take comment on the naming of a private easement. To name the private easement Clyde Reynolds Drive located off Long Shoals Road and name private easement Stonecrest Drive located off of Bob Friday Road. I'll ask Ms. Sarah Penley, GIS Specialist 3, to provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizen comment will be taken. Ms. Penley.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Thank you in advance for your time, so hopefully we won't take up too much of it. The first application that we have tonight is a road name petition that was submitted by property owners to name the existing easement to their property located off of Long Shoals Road as Clyde Reynolds Drive. Staff did receive a petition that was bearing seven out of the eight required signatures and there was no objection to the name when it was reviewed by the TRC and the planning Board at their regularly scheduled meetings last month. The purpose for naming this particular easement is that we have three existing homes out there and we currently have the addition of a fourth in the permitting process at this time and there just weren't enough numbers available off of Long Shoals Road to accommodate those folks and ensure that they were safely located the way it was set up at this time. Again, the planning board and the TRC both reviewed these cases and recommended approval and that concludes my presentation for the first road naming easement of Clyde Reynolds Drive.
Are there any citizens wishing to make comment? Excuse me, are there any citizens wishing to make comment? If you would, please step to the dais, state your name and address, please.
My name is Janice Ryan. I live at 1038 Carpenter Drive in Lincoln. Edna is my grandmother and my mom and them have lived out there about 70 years and there was rentalsies that lived there before. My grandfather passed away in 2007 and we want to do this, name the road after him and that's all.
Any other citizens wishing to make comment? Any commission comments or questions? I have one. I was wondering if they could change it from Stonecrest to Duke University Drive? Okay, at this time, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Naming of a private easement, name private easement Clyde Reynolds Drive located off of Long Shoals Road and name private easement Stonecrest Drive located off of Bob Friday Road. Motion made by Commissioner Frayley, seconded by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion?
That's correct.
We're good with it. Go ahead.
I apologize for that one. This one's just as simple. We received a petition from the property owners to name the private driveway accessing their property as Stonecrest Drive. The applicants, we received two out of the two required signatures and this is in an effort to ensure that they too are in the midst of permitting new homes which are located well off the roadway and not visible should 911 try to locate them as addressed off of Bob Friday. This was reviewed by the planning board and TRC at last month's meeting and staff recommends that you support the road naming of Stonecrest Drive. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Are there any citizens like to make comment? Hearing none, are there any comments from the commission? There's a motion made by Commissioner Frayley, seconded by Commissioner Williams, naming of a private easement. Name of the private easement is Clyde Reynolds Drive located off of Long Shoals Road and the name of the private easement Stonecrest Drive located off of Bob Friday Road. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. I almost wanted to take a 20-minute recess after all that. No, it's fine.
I apologize. Thank you, gentlemen.
Moving those public hearings kind of threw me off. This concludes the public hearing for tonight. The Board would like to thank each of you for your input. This time, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing? Motion made by Commissioner Williams, seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion is unanimous. Our next item is agenda revision or approval. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as is. Okay, what item would you like to pull?
I want to pull one.
Okay, let's go ahead and ask your question. We may not have to pull it.
Okay, on the agenda page 41, it says the $5,000 is going to be spent for Phase 1. Do we know how many phases there are? So, if this is going to be the total.
Well, I serve on the COG Board. This is a phase two. I'll give you a little background. Other regions within the country have this type of mobility plan that we don't for transportation or freight and consequently, they're getting big federal grants that we can't do. We would be applying as a county rather than a region, so it's important to have this in place so that we can, like the Pennine Railroad or anything like that, that we want to apply for. It would come under that, so this is a first phase.
Okay, also on page 40...
Does that answer your questions, Commissioner Price?
I'm okay with...I don't want to pay $5,000 now and that gets us hooked in on $250,000 later on that I had to pay. Page 46, it's got North Carolina local bill looks max and it's got Gaston Kennel with $5,000, but at the top, it's got the agency Gaston Cleveland MPO $30,000. Are we going to be paying $10,000 as a member of the MPO?
No. Now, that's everybody together within the MPO.
So, our total is $5,000?
Right.
Okay, I'll do that. I might have to pull one.
And I want to pull one.
Commissioner Carpenter, what item would you like to pull?
I want to pull V for an additional member to serve on the Comprehensive Land Use Plan Steering Committee Review.
Are there any other commissioners at this time wish to revise the agenda? Okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda with item V being pulled. Motion made by Commissioner Carpenter, seconded by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. There are no approval of minutes. Our next item is citizen recognition. We have Mr. Don Barkley. If you'll please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a recommendation? So Donna doesn't have to print all this stuff out again? Should we maybe send them down to her? The planning stuff, materials?
Yes.
Save her a couple hours' work.
Well, I think she's going to do it for a meeting or two to make sure that we're...
There's no doubt on it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Barkley.
Thank you. I wondered about these on the agenda, page 105, about the commissioner's legislative request that...
I've got one somewhere.
About necessary, about not having lawsuits to hold up unnecessary work on highways. I kind of agree with that part of it about saving money, except it seems like to me you asked the people of the county to pass bonds to build a courthouse so they could have court hearings. Now, I don't particularly like environmental studies, but if I have to do one, why doesn't the government have to do one? You've got all the legality you need now. Like national government, what you need is more credibility. But why is it government is above being questioned in court? That's what I want to know. And I have been held up now for several years waiting on 3/21/85 and I believe it was written that you can only initiate a lawsuit after the project has been what, approved? What was the wording in that thing? Approved or designated? When they designate one, they haven't finished all the environmental studies and when you ask them, "Well, we're not finished yet," so when do they ever finish environmental study? When do they ever finish the design? They don't. They'll tell you, "We'll finish it next week." Well, by then, it's too late to file a lawsuit. Now, I've looked at these greenways and I don't see why you want to spend $250,000 on a greenway either. And the explanation I've got, well, we're not spending any money. We're just going to ask for the money because we're not going to...I believe it's page 103 that says, "No condemnation will be used." Of course, we've heard that before, but that is not law. That is simply county policy, which I agree with, but if you approve this and get the grant, it will be another county board that decides whether or not to condemn. Now, I think if you want to do some legislative requests, one of the best requests would be to send to McHenry and ask him why we can get money to build greenways, but we can't get money to build roads because I think this money comes out of the Highway Trust Fund. And now, do we have a map of the greenways that they want to build? I didn't notice it on the agenda that I received. It was on there several weeks ago. And Donna, would you pass this out? These are the old maps.
Motion to accept. Motion made by Commissioner Keger, seconded by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion is unanimous.
Oh, yeah, they're all the same.
You can pass those down, Donna.
And take a look at the map and it shows you how efficient the planners are because they want to put a walkway or greenway through the middle of an industrial park. And I believe Commissioner Keger is on the college board and I don't know that the colleges asked for a greenway. Maybe they have, but you see the little dotted lines going around and back and forth? That's what the city has planned for greenways. And I guess what the county is going to do would be call an express lane so the kids in college can get out of college for lunch, walk down to the lake and smoke pot. Well, have a good meeting, Mr. Chairman, and thank you very much. I do have one request. When you vote on these things, I want you to hold your hand up and we will find out who is conservative and who is liberal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barkley. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion made by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Carpenter. Any discussion? Commissioner Keger.
I know we're not supposed to address the speakers, but can I address the resolution he was discussing?
It's a separate, it's on non-consent.
Yep, we'll address it on non-consent. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is unanimous. Okay, our next item is legislative request. The local legislative delegation requires a unanimous vote on any resolution in order to sponsor legislation for consideration by the General Assembly. Their first item is the Gaston County Board of Commissioners legislative request, legislative agenda for the 2015 session of North Carolina General Assembly. I'll entertain a motion. Motion made by Commissioner Carpenter. I will second that. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Our next item is Commissioner Carpenter with a VOC Legislative Interim Policy Request for the National Association of Counties requesting a modification of procedures for environmental review and challenges involving federal highway construction. I'll entertain a motion. Motion made by Commissioner Carpenter. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Frayley. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? One opposed? Thank you. Our next item is the non-consent agenda, zoning matters for public hearing.
Who made?
No.
Yeah, it wasn't on the non-consent. It was on the legislative request.
The one you're talking about is on the non-consent. Nick, keep quiet. Okay, our next item is non-consent agenda, zoning matters for public hearing. Item one is Commissioner Carpenter...hold on.
Continue.
Yeah, we're going to continue one and two, so we'll go down to B, item B. Commissioner Carpenter, planning and zoning to consider endorsement of county application proposal through the Federal Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Program for fiscal years 2016, 2017. I'm assuming Commissioner Carpenter, you'll make that motion. Is there any discussion? I mean, is there a second? Is there a second to this item? Seconded by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion?
Let me explain that...
Commissioner Carpenter.
This is something that very seldom comes along for us, have an opportunity to add an amenity to this county that will have lasting effect for years and years to come for the citizens of the county. Well, it does go through the park over there. It...the people in those businesses over there very much approve of it because they think their employees would use it during break time and it'd be very beneficial to them as well as many other citizens. And I think I sent each one of you an email, giving a little history of the things that's happened in the county and practically every park we've got had some federal participation in it. There are East Gaston, North Gaston, or a couple up Bessemer Tryon around the county and we would not have them without someone taking the initiative to support it. And I will point out that someone, a couple of people within the last week have questioned me about why we don't have water out into the county, public water. And it was because Chuck was around then, but they had public hearings because there's a lot of federal money put out to help extend water and store out into the counties and counties around us accepted it. Our county, they actually had a public hearing and about got lynched because they said they didn't want no federal money and so we don't have it. Every bit we put in, like we paid a lot of money just to get it up to High Shoals here within the last couple of years. So I think it was that kind of vision that I fully support it and I would encourage each one of you to really consider this. I think it would have lasting benefit. And Mark just came in. I think he was wanting to say something. Can we ask him to say?
Yeah, let's go ahead and finish questions from the board.
Okay. Did you have something you want to say, Commissioner Keger?
Well, I did. We had a Parks and Rec Board meeting last night and I did ask Ms. Hart to be here. Can I ask her a question or two?
Let's see if anybody else has anything.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the Board? Commissioner Price.
As I asked last time, where is the money coming from? County. Back.
Well, I also pointed out, Mr. Price, that we have found money, this will go into the, I believe, 2016, maybe 1617 budget, and we found money to do a lot of things except, you know, like helping to save the Dallas courthouse, to put new recreational facilities in, which this will be, and our high schools. And I think it's that important that we...this is, this money won't come back and it's an opportunity to do something with this trail that will have lasting benefit for all the citizens.
Earl, can you answer that question as well for Commissioner Price? Where would this money come from?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I can. At the head of the Board, I have looked into this a little bit in terms of getting some assistance from some of the municipalities that would be affected. I don't have any definitive answer to whether they might be involved or not at this point, but I did speak with Doug Luckett and I think he and I agree that this would be an ideal use of some of the proceeds of the annual lease payments that we would receive in as much as this initiative would be very consistent with the purpose of those funds and certainly with the county's own wellness initiative. And I would also add that based on some of the findings of the Greater Gaston Development Corporation's recent report, I believe this would also be highly consistent with the determination that we need to do some image building with Gaston County. I believe this is the kind of amenity that many higher-end businesses are looking for when they relocate here to... when they relocate here to benefit the recreational interests of their employees. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Price.
If this moves forward, and at some part, when it comes back, if the grants are approved, can we do them separately? I mean, there's no use in us building a trail if the city of Gastonia is going to build one. I mean, is it...
I think we have time to negotiate with them as well as Lowell. That walkway up to Poston Park, that walk stops it. I think the city of Lowell would participate in that one also. This is a request to get the grant. And as I said before, we've had the will to make some other things happen, and I think we can.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if we can handicap our chances of whether or not we're going to receive this grant or not. The more I've looked into this specific grant, first of all, it's a non-binding application, from what I understand. And this is what we task staff to do. And they put a lot of time and effort and work into this. And, you know, I think we should move forward with the application. I think this board, Board of County Commissioners, said publicly that we were going to do whatever it took to improve our health rating from being ranked number... At the time, number 81. Now we've moved up to number 79. We said we were going to do whatever it took to increase that rating. Well, this is an opportunity for us to do that. If we're not going to do things like this, what did we mean when we said that? Whenever we made that statement, what did we mean if we're not going to take action on it? As Mr. Mathers said, the report that came over from the Development Corporation, we told the business community, we're willing to do what it takes to improve the image of Gaston County and to do what it takes to allure businesses to Gaston County. This fits with what they've requested and what we said we were going to do. If we're not going to do it, what did we mean when we said we were going to do it? Finally, I think Mr. Mathers made a great point. In speaking with Mr. Luckett and some others, assuming the lease goes through, which is, I think, a pretty sure thing here sometime in the near future, this would be the perfect place to spend some of those health-related funds that Karamot has agreed to give the county to spend, which I think is about $250,000 a year in the current proposal, if I'm not mistaken, roughly. No, I think it's maybe more than that, $450,000. So this would more than pay for this particular project. So I think it fits with those guidelines. As far as working with municipalities, I think we owe it to the city of Lowell, the city of Gastonia, the city of Dallas, to give them an opportunity to try to find in their budget if they want to partner with us. And just want to remind the board, it's a non-binding application. We have, you know, we can certainly, if we can't find the funds, if something happens with the negotiations with the hospital, we don't have the money. There's nothing tying our hands. There's no obligation. So I do plan on supporting it. I don't think there's any negative in moving forward the application. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess my question would be for Mr. Mathers. I know in times past, we've talked about parks and rec facilities being upgraded. I think we've been passed a few items, I think, for Ms. Hart to do the studies, a few items there. Would this be the same pot of money that we would be pooling if we were going to fix up some of our parks as well?
Not necessarily. But I believe that, you know, the use of some of the hospital funds for upgrading park facilities would be appropriate as well. But, you know, this, I think we need to recognize, is a one-time shot. Whereas the hospital funding will occur on an annual basis, I believe. And so, this would be less than 50% of one year's allocation from the hospital lease proceeds. And I believe it would be a good investment. Now, I would certainly hasten to mention that we need to do a lot more, I think, in terms of applying our resources to upgrade our park facilities in general. We spend... And because of our austerity budget that we've had for the last several years, we've spent a very paltry sum on our parks, and that needs to change. But that can be incrementally increased over time. So it's not a very direct answer to your question, but best I can do right now.
I guess my second part of that question would be, should we hold off on this to find out if somebody like Gastonia or Lowell wants to partner with us in trying to get into this? I know at one time Lowell approached me about this, and they didn't have the money. They wanted us to put in that sidewalk from Lowell to Poston. So there's a lot of differences there. I just think this is the same pool of money that we could do a lot of upgrades that we've been talking about we want to do, whether it be to a park or something we're wanting to do. And I don't know where we're getting the money from. I know we haven't doled into some of our other funding that we talked about trying to get for the parks, but we need to start figuring out a way, as the budget comes around, to get ready for that.
Well, Commissioner Brown, I think that if the municipalities did come in with some funds, it's not... It's going to be a relatively small portion of the $200,000 match that we'd ultimately need. But I would submit that this project is very consistent with our overall recreational plan. I think it complements that. Linking some of the park facilities that we have in the county, regardless of whether they're city or county-owned, makes a lot of sense, and it creates a degree of wholeness of the whole plan. But in any case, you know, I think the point that this is just an application at this stage. There is always the opportunity to identify specifically what we're going to use for match before we actually accept the grant.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, Kathy.
Yeah, I'm going to make a few comments.
I didn't need Kathy anymore. I just had a comment also.
Okay. I'm assuming you'll comment on the vote.
Okay. I just have a couple of comments. Originally, I was not going to support this idea, not because I don't like trails. I think trails are a good thing. One of my issues is, you know, where the money's going to come from. You have schools. Just the headline in the day's paper is four new schools. You've got constant needs at the Health Department, DSS, GMs, you name it. So one of the things that I even talk back and forth to the board is, you know, one of priorities. Well, one of the things I helped lead on this board, and this board came together and supported, was an actual list of priorities. And the number three list on those priorities is quality of life. And I do think... I do think it would be good for Gaston County to have these trails. Do I like the way it's tied up? It's no grant. It's tax dollars. This is coming from the federal government. It's coming from your highway funds and things like that. It's why your roads aren't getting built. I don't like all of that. At the end of the day, all we can do is pass resolutions to say we support that or not. But as a representative of Gaston County, I don't like stagnation. I don't like unemployment. I don't like the idea that companies would rather locate other areas where they have a lot of these amenities. So it's one of those... It's a necessary evil. And again, I'm not saying trails are evil. I'm just saying, in the big scope of all the things that we have to do, this is just one of those things I really think we need to do, even if it comes out of our fund balance. We can talk about money's hypotheticals, but at the end of the day, one of our priorities is quality of life. And we wanted to work on health issues. We have the money in the fund balance. I think if we give $200,000, you're basically... It's a quarter for every dollar that you're getting from the federal government. Like you said, Commissioner Carpenter, one-time money. So for those that say that I cannot change, I have changed on this issue. And I'll gladly support it. I do think... I will not support condemning someone's land for a trail, and this board never has. And we actually have it in writing, we won't do that. But at the end of the day, if we're going to improve and we're going to lead, this is something we need to do. And I would say probably hold in my nose, taking federal money, knowing what it's doing. I represent this county, and it's something we really need to do. Really, it shouldn't even be a big-time vote. It's really a no-brainer if you really want to get down to it, in my opinion.
Commissioner Keger.
Thank you. Well said. And again, you know, I think wrongly Gaston County Commissioners, in the past, on a very, very small number of votes, have given up that money. Whether it's state or federal, and it is tax dollars, as you said, but it's going to go to another county or another state, and it's our people that are contributing to that. So as you said, a no-brainer. But just, you know, the reason I was going to ask Ms. Hart to come up was just to reiterate the fact that we're not... This is not a commitment. We're just voting to go along to the next stage. If we get the grant, then we have to commit, and we may not get the grant. But a great point that Jason brought up earlier, we were talking about it, and Earl brought it up again. You know, I think we're committed to use the funds that we get from a hospital lease for certain areas that involve a healthier community. So we're going to have those dollars, and we're going to have to put them into something like that. If it were having to raise the tax rate or something, I think we're all in agreement, that would be a whole different issue. But thank you for coming, Kathy. Thank you, and thank you also, Doctor.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Well, I think each one of you got an email from Dr. Mark Epstein. And he asked me what time this was going to be on the board, and I think I might have told him the story, because I think I told him it'd be after 6:30. So we're already into it. But I don't know if we want to let him say what he had to say.
Well, it's good. I think it'd be good to go ahead and take a vote.
Okay.
That'd be good. Any further discussion?
Excuse me. Any further discussion from the board? This time... Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is unanimous. Our next item is items pulled... Let me say this. Dr. Epstein?
Sir.
Not trying to be rude, but I figured we had it, and there's no use beating a dead horse.
I understand. You got my emails, so...
Yes, sir. Thank you. Our next item is items pulled from consent agenda. Commissioner Carpenter pulled item V, if I'm correct.
Yes. And what I would do... You have your list on... Let's see, what page is that on?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven. Well, I was talking with one of the young developer builders, and he said he would like to serve on there. And I looked at the list, and we do have some builders and developers, but not in quite the same category. He, and especially his family's, had over the years, got great experience. And so, I would like to move that we add Tripp McLean to that review committee, or whatever we calling it.
Tripp McLean. It's T-R-I-P-T-M-C-L-E-A-N.
I can give you his address.
I can give you his phone number.
His business address is 3816-13 South New Opera, Gastonia, 28056.
Chairman, do we need to designate how that person's appointed in the future, or what position he holds?
Well, this is a one-time task force, I think.
It's a one-time task force. I do want to change... We have an appointment, Ellie Alford, County Planning Board Chair. I think we need to change that name to John Bailey, County Planning Board Vice Chair, especially for the time being, based off circumstances.
Mm-hmm. I agree with that.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner?
So I have a motion to approve this as we amended those two names.
A motion to amend. Or amend the main motion.
Okay.
My motion is amend the motion to add Tripp McLean and... Who'd you say the other one was in place of Ellie?
John Bailey.
John Bailey.
Okay, the first motion is on the floor, the main motion. Okay, right now, okay, you made that motion.
Yeah, you got to do the amended first. Do the amendment.
Do the amendment. Commissioner Carpenter makes the motion to amend the motion to add Tripp McLean and to replace Ellie Alford with John Bailey.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Keger. Is there any discussion on that?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. Now entertain a motion to approve item V.
That's all of them.
As amended.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Keger, seconded by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Our next item is appointments, and we will start with Commissioner Frayley.
I got several, Mr. Chairman. Two reappointments and one new appointment. Just go ahead and do them all. Environmental Review Advisory Board, reappointment Mike Standforth. Planning Board, Larry Herlocker. Workforce Development Board, Brett Buchanan.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Frayley, seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion is unanimous. Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two at this time. For the Environmental Review Board, reappointment requested by Roger Hurst. And for the Gaston County Board of Adjustments, application received from Betty Clegg.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Price.
I have one. I have an application for the council aging from Kathy Kinsey.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the Library Board of Trustees, Mr. Ralph Robinson, Jr. And for the Sarah Local Planning Committee, Mr. Jim Burke. Donna, am I... Or Chuck, am I appointing you to the Fire Advisory Board? Your name's on here, is it? I will reluctantly appoint Charles L. Moore to the Fire Advisory Board.
I'll need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Carpenter. Seconded by Commissioner Carpenter. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is unanimous. Commissioner Carpenter.
I have, well, three reappointments. To the Planning Board, Phil Cole. The Sarah Local Planning, Dean Harris. And the Sarah Local Planning, Jeff Hicks.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion is unanimous. Commissioner Keger.
Mike McLeod to the Environmental Advisory Board. That's a reappointment. Glenn Bratton to the Sarah Planning Committee. And Claudette Argabrait to the Workforce Development Board.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion is unanimous. I have one. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jack Brown to the Travel and Tourism Advisory Board.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Frayley. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. We have some full-board appointments, and I'm waiting on them to pull up. We have Charlotte Regional Partnership.
I'll make a motion that we reappoint Tracy Field back to that.
Motion made by Commissioner... Motion made by Commissioner Carpenter, seconded by Commissioner Kieger. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion is unanimous. Our next item is reports.
Wait a minute, we've got one more.
We don't have a.
Oh, quality, we don't have anybody there. Okay, second.
Our next item is reports. Commissioner Fraley.
None, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Brown.
None at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Price.
I'd like to, yeah, two, for the DHHS Board meeting. I'd like to report that on the Health side of the division, we have 31 vacancies, and on the Department of Health and Human Service, Social Services, we have 21 vacancies. These vacancies has enabled the department to surpass its lapsed salaries in the budget already for the year, and staff is working hard to interview and hire, but we have already passed our allotment for lapsed salaries for the budget year. Also, we have 276 children in DSS custody. Like to report that, you may have seen the article in the newspaper about the time capsule. Director Dobbin has scheduled a time in April, not a specific date yet, but April is Public Health Month, and they have decided to open the time capsule in the month of April, and he has asked the Board of Commissioners to think about items that they would like to include in the new capsule, which will be buried after the old one is opened.
Of course, a picture of me. Of course.
The farmer's market going forward. The farmer's market is now going to be able to accept EBT and food nutritional supplements. So any individual who is on food stamps or has an EBT card will now be able to use those cards at the farmer's market once they get open this year going forward. And the Health Department is undergoing accreditation. The accreditation committee was in town January 22nd and 23rd to do their site study, and we should be hearing from that committee as soon as they get their findings. Gaston Family Health Service, about the only thing that was, I'd like to report on that meeting, was that we did have our yearly audit, and the audit came back, I won't say it came back perfect, but there were no discrepancies in the findings. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, and we'd have a Gaston Family Health Service meeting tomorrow night, if anybody'd like to come, at 6:00.
Thank you, Commissioner Price. Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I have to report is on January the 13th, my wife and I had a beautiful baby girl, you see her on your screen there, that is Lucy Madeline Williams, and you may look at that, and you'll, you're probably thinking the same thing I'm thinking, that is the most beautiful baby you have ever seen in your life, and you would be right. So we're very thankful for her. Everything was smooth, she's healthy, and we're very blessed. We thank God for a healthy delivery and for blessing us with our fifth child. I appreciate the prayers of this board and all the emails and everything we've gotten. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Our prayers are for the child and mother, they have to live with you. Commissioner Carpenter.
Yeah, and thank you for the nice article in the Gazette. I've got one thing I want to report on. You know that Commissioner Philbeck and I have been working with the North Carolina DOT Rail Division on trying to find a leasee for the, a lease or, for the operation of the P&amp;N Rail. We've received three quotes on that. We have prioritized those in a list, and the first part, the one that's prioritized, is going to meet with us in Raleigh tomorrow. We unanimously selected this one for the first, but after some checking of, they have great history, operating history, but they have some financial issues, which we've had investigated quite much, and so we'll be up there trying to determine, you know, whether to go or no-go with the first one. It's a great opportunity for this county to have that rail operating, and probably one of the biggest, finest assets that's unused in this county today, and there's a lot of property along there that, a lot of opportunities for people to come in and develop it. So y'all, y'all pray for me and Tracy, as we go over and try to sort through that, and we'll try to make the best decision we can.
Pray for me, I agreed to ride with Joe. Keep in mind, he's 80, has a left foot, could go in seconds.
I'm only 78.
Commissioner Kieger.
As I mentioned last night, we had the monthly Parks and Recreation Meeting. The, one thing that stood out to me, which park did we have the bathrooms ordered for? North Belmont? Which ones did we have on order now?
Dallas.
Okay, the Dallas Park, the big park. We will have new facilities there soon. And I did want to mention that it's time to sign up, and I plan to register this year for the Gaston County Senior Games, about every sport and activity you can think of, and believe it or not, you only got to be 50. So that's why I can sign up. I will be playing cornhole. But I do want to remind everybody of that. Mr. Carpenter joined me at the Legislative Goal Conference down in Moore County for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, and I'll tell you what, if you think these meetings are long, you sit there from 8:30 till about 5:30 discussing, you know how many goals we send, and I think 10, multiply that times 100 counties, and then the directors bring it down to somewhat a booklet full. But we set our priorities, are going to send them to Raleigh on the core values, agriculture, the environment, general government, health, human service, public safety, education, tax and finance. And we got that accomplished in one and a half days, and we were back on our way home. I did attend the Community Empowerment Ministry's Martin Luther King Day Celebration, and former Commissioner Pearl Floyd and myself were recognized for work that we did back in the late '90s, early 2000s, and I'm surprised they dug up that stuff. We were the ones that did the resolution that recognized Martin Luther King Day as a federal holiday, and then later as a state holiday, and somebody dug that up, and I'm appreciative of it. There was, Joe and I also attended the Alliance for Growth, the Board of Trustee Meeting, which in other words is the Greater Gaston Development Corporation, and their committees gave their, I guess, their points of interest to the full body, and there were well over 150 people. I thought I counted about 155, and that organization can run a meeting, they can get you in and get you out, and that was also very well. The last thing I will bring up, it's something that, it just concerned me, my skin's so thick after a number of years on this board, I don't get mad at things, but one of our liberal constituents, I think he served as the President of the Democratic Party once, sort of took a poke at the commissioners for not doing our job with regards to having the Greater Gaston Development Corporation doing what we should be doing. And I think nothing could be farther from the truth. I think it takes intelligent people to be able to reach out and ask for help, and for somebody out in the community to think that seven people know it all, they're gravely mistaken, and I think it's a privilege, and I accept it as an honor, that the leaders of some of the biggest industries in our region are willing to work with us, take our advice, and we accept their advice and findings, and implement what we can. But I just thought that was just a, just something to help separate the community instead of bringing it together, and I, it wasn't an article, I think it was a copy of a blog on the Gaston Gazette website, but I did take exception to that, because the folks that are helping us aren't doing our job. They're out there trying to work with us to provide the best for our community, including the individual that wrote that blog. But that said, again, I'm very happy for the work that these folks are doing, and I think we're fortunate.
Thank you, Commissioner Kieger. I have just a couple, I'll try to keep it short. Last Tuesday, the Board of Commissioners met with the school board. We had a good dinner. One of the things that we're trying to do is build better relations with the school board. There were some new appointees, excuse me, some new folks elected to the school board. We wanted to meet those folks, get to know them, and see how we could work going forward together. As many of you have read in the Gaston Gazette, there are four main items of focus that the school board came out of its planning retreat. One of those is to close Ryan, Forest Heights, and Pleasant Ridge, consolidate those into one school. The other is Stanley Middle to build another middle school there. The other is a vocational school, and I think the last one was another middle school, if I'm correct. I want to applaud the school board. I think they have a very tough road to hoe, and it's a lot of tough decisions, but I look forward to working with them to make some of these wishes a reality. What I'd like to do, if it would be the pleasure of the board, is to give Donna a direction to set up a meeting between our two boards with Earl. I think we need our financial folks there, Bryant, as soon as we can, to sit down and talk about these. From my understanding, and I'm, Earl, on the bond money, how much longer do we have before we can release that, or do we have period?
No, it is time limited. I think we have three years from April 1st, 2014, so that'll be April 1st, 2017. Is it November?
November. Okay.
But in any case, we have sufficient time to.
And how much do we have left on the bond money?
There is 95 million available.
Okay. And if I'm correct, if we stagger some of these issues or schools, we can do that without adding a higher payment to our debt load?
That's, that's correct. We need to go back and take another look at those scenarios, but I believe that if we sequence the issuance properly, we could probably release up to $55 million over the next several years without significantly impacting our debt service.
Okay. If it would please the board, I'd like to, again, get Donna to set up a meeting to not just talk about it, but maybe go ahead and give the school board some direction, at least saying, okay, we're good with items one and two, whatever items that we're good with, and let's move with it. Would that be okay with the board?
I think so.
I think we're actually looking at item one and two.
You know, that's, that's.
Yes.
That's one of the things that we discussed, having more direct communication. We've worked manager to superintendent before, but I think having that direct, I mean, dialogue with the school board members will be good.
Okay. What I'd like too at this meeting, is there any way, I don't know if it has, how you have to advertise it, but I'd like to be able to hear the needs, look at how much bonds we have, what dates we can release, and I'd like to be able to, not that we will, but to at least to be able to, in that meeting, to make a decision, instead of having a meeting to make a meeting to go make a decision on another meeting. So I don't know how that has to be advertised, but that's the type of meeting we want, is where if we have adequate information and we feel comfortable, we can say, this is the direction we want to go.
Would it, would it save time and make sense if, you know, we're going to go find out how much money we're going to have to offer? Would it not save us time that if before that meeting, we give them enough time to put their ducks in a row and send to us, and, you know, if we do this, this, and this, it's this much, and if we do this, then when we get to the meeting, we can get right to it, instead of having a big explanation?
I'm already working on that. That's going to happen. It's, what we're going to do is have items one through four, this is what they cost, this is a priority need, and we just look at, say, hey, we can move with this or not.
Is the board good with that, Commissioner Brown?
I just wanted to add one thing to something like Commissioner Kieger was talking about, is this board's action that we took last year during the budget season to postpone using that bond money has now turned into a positive, and I think that's going to be something that we can look forward to in making the relationship between both boards grow, and so I want to commend this board for having some positive thoughts and reactions after that. Okay. Donna, the direction, you know what type of meeting? It'd be basically a voting meeting if we want to do that. It'll be between both boards. We can probably do it at the admin building, where we can have enough room to meet. I'd like to do it, we leave to go to Washington on the 20th. I'd like to do it between now and maybe February the 15th, 16th. So as long as we can get a quorum of folks there from both boards, we'd like everybody there, but it may be hard, but it's, we need to move. Okay? Yeah, any night, 6:00. You can send out a couple of dates and make sure everybody is good with everybody. Some of us have to work, unlike Commissioner Kieger, so we may need to plan. Okay.
Our meeting on the 24th, did we move that?
It's February the 10th. We're going to have a work session and a board meeting on February the 10th. Okay, this concludes our meeting for tonight. Our next work session is February the 10th. Our February 24th regular meeting has been canceled and rescheduled to February the 10th, and will immediately follow the work session at 6:00 PM, the Harley Big Gaston Junior Public Forum Courthouse. Thank you for watching. If you have questions or comments, please telephone our clerk, Donna Buff, at 704-866-3196, and share them. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries, adjourn.